Bad, bad deals, bad deals.
Yeah. That was pretty good, wasn't it?
Yeah, that was pretty good.
You, you, you understood.
All right, it looks like it's eight o'clock, so we're gonna get the meeting started here. So, with that, we're gonna call the meeting to order. And first and foremost, on the agenda, we actually had lost a very dear board member of ours this past week, and so a lot of our board right now is kinda going through some grieving process, so please understand that tonight. We're gonna actually start out with a moment of silence, so please, everybody, just bear with us here for a few moments. Thank you, everyone. Bob Rochelle was very, very important to all of us, and it's gonna be a difficult time going forward, but we know, we know he's taking care of us in some way, so. We'll go on to the second part of the meeting tonight, and that'll be the approval of the minutes. As many of you know, we had two different meetings. Of course, the last regularly scheduled meeting from June 4th as well as June 20th. So, we'll start out with the approval of the minutes from June 4th. So, and by the way, this is all going to be, the meeting is recorded and broadcasted on TV. So with that, I will take a motion to approve the minutes from, the current minutes, I guess, for June 4th. June 4th, okay. Do I have a motion?
Over approval of the minutes of June 4th and June 20th.
Okay, Mr. Bartley moved for both. Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Spence, okay. All right. And then, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carried. And, um, item number three on the agenda, items to be added to the agenda by commission members or staff. Does anybody else have anything they want to add?
Madam Chair, I would like to have a discussion on elections.
Discussion on the elections?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. And then, um, item number four, it looks like, invitation for citizens to schedule a time on the commission agenda for an item not listed, so anything not listed on the agenda. Time will be limited to five minutes per person to address the board. So, does anybody from the audience have anything else in, that they would like to have us hear about that is not on the current minutes? Okay, so seeing none? And item number four, disclosure of conflicts of interest within the board. Does anybody currently have any conflicts of interest with anybody else on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll carry forward. Okay, and we'll go with the approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Uh, Mr. McEwen, okay, and a second?
Second.
By Mr. Ford, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed? All right. Okay, and so now we are going to be moving as to the next part of the agenda, Brookings County Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm gonna read our opening statement. Okay, so again, I will now call this meeting to order. I would like to welcome those in attendance at tonight's meeting. The Brookings County Planning Commission is a nine-member commission whose function is to recommend approval or disapproval of land use plans, zoning ordinances, subdivision plaits, and amendments thereof to the Brookings County Commission. The commission makes its recommendation based upon the adopted comprehensive plan for the physical development of the unincorporated areas of Brookings County. As a matter of policy, all motions are made in the positive. After a motion is approved and seconded, it is open for debate. Those supporting the motion shall, in turn, give their reasons. Those opposing the motion shall then offer their reasons. After everyone has been given a chance to be heard, the commission shall recommend approval or disapproval based on the testimony and information presented. A simple majority vote of the quorum of members of the planning and zoning board in attendance is required to forward a recommendation. Okay? So. Item number seven, condition, excuse me, consideration of plaits. So, we'll start out with item number seven A. And, okay, so this is, um, 2019 plat 008. Plat, plat of Block 1 Jensen addition of the northwest quarter of Section 9 Township 109 North, radius, radius 48 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Okay, and do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, by Randy, thank you, and a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kleinjohn, okay. And then, Richard, staff report, please?
Yes. 2019 plat 008 Lawrence and Pat Jensen are plating off a five-acre building site from the 148 acres that they own. In the farmstead, we use a fifth, separate 50-foot wide driveway for access to the property off 480th Avenue. The farmstead is an original homestead of the quarter as noted in the 1909 plat map that was attached. And the plat meets the planning requirements for the 2016 comprehensive plan for unincorporated rural areas land use statement on page 24 of the agricultural land use of the comprehensive plan. This shows the plat here. This is the 50-foot wide access off of 480th Avenue, comes up here. Nice wide access to the building site up here. This is just the beacon map showing the proposed plat, what it looks like here, in red. This is the driveway coming up here. There is another driveway here to access this partial portion of the land and down here on the, the quarter line, to access the south part. But driveway access right here into the building site. This is the 1909 map, showing the dot right there where the building site was. And there is remnants or structures of buildings left up there also. Beacon map showing the, the quarter with the railroad division and the sketchy outline of where the plat would be, not to scale. And that's all that I have.
All right, so we will open it up for discussion from the board. Anybody have some thoughts on this plat? Honestly, it looks pretty straightforward. Anyone? All right, and then, um, public hearing, so anybody from the audience wanna speak on this agenda item? Is the applicant out there by chance?
No, the applicant is not here this evening.
Okay, so proponents, opponents, we'll close that public hearing, and then back to the board.
It's pretty straightforward, like you said.
Yeah.
Seems to meet all the requirements, and so it's, uh, approvable.
All right. Anything else from the board? All right, we will go ahead and call for a vote, please, Richard.
Bartley.
Hi.
McEwen.
Aye.
Eriksen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Kleinjohn.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Spence.
Aye.
Jensen.
Yes.
Andy Langwich.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, moving on to agenda item 7B. This is 2019 plat 009, plat of Anderson addition in the southwest quarter of Section 27 Township 110 North, radius 49 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. And, it looks like it's pulled up here. When you're ready, Richard, staff report, please. Oh, thank you, uh. I did, yes. May I get a motion from the board, please, to?
Approve approval.
Thank you, Mr. Bartley, and a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Ford, thank you. And Richard, please, all right.
Yeah, plat, 2019 plat 009, John Anderson is plating off 33.7 acres of the existing building site of an, of an existing building site from the 153.68 acres that they own. And the farmstead will use the existing driveway located in 475th Avenue to access the property. And it does meet the plant's, plant meets the plating requirements of the 2016 comprehensive plating requirements of the unincorporated rural area land use stated on page 24. There's the proposed plat, nice square down in the corner, lot here of this, of the quarter. Southwest quarter, the southwest corner. There's the beacon map, showing the proposed plat around the, a little bit longer on the, over to the quarter line and staying within the trees right here, so. There's just the beacon map without that, the big square area on here. And that's all that I have.
And we'll open it up for discussion from the board. Again, seems pretty straightforward. Looks like there's an established property on the, um, excuse me, a house farmstead, probably.
Yes, there is, a house and other outbuildings on there, grain bins.
Okay. All right, any other discussion from the board? Again, we'll open it up for a public hearing, proponents and opponents. We'll start out with proponents, anyone from the audience? Do we know if the applicant's here?
The applicant is here this evening, I don't know if he would.
Okay, um, the applicant, please come forward, state your name.
You wanna say anything, John? Do you wanna say anything on?
No, okay, all right. All right, nobody else, we'll close the public hearing, and back to the board for any discussion.
I would just like to, just like to say, it's been, it's been really interesting and fun to see how, um, Ruth has been, uh, from, from our, I've seen our daughters, my daughter, um, as a, a young person, and, and Ruth was, was a young lady to be a, um, just a, a mother as a, a student-teacher for, for a daughter to be the teacher and, and how it was for our students, and so it's just so fun. And now, the, the, how that novita being so close to where the, where John and, and Ruth lived. And anything is changing, so, anyway.
Okay, sounds like they know what they're doing, pretty much, okay?
Exactly.
All right, good comments, anything else from the board? All right, and with that, Richard, please call for a vote.
McEwen.
Aye.
Eriksen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Kleinjohn.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Spence.
Aye.
Jensen.
Yes.
Bartley.
Aye.
Andy Langwich.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. We'll move on again to item number 7C. This is 2019 plat 010, plat of lots 12 and 14 in Block 1 in Paradise Point addition in Government Lot 2, Section 22 Township 112 North, radius 47 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. And, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved to approve.
So, so moved, Mr. McEwen, and a second.
Second.
All right, second for Mr. Kleinjohn, thank you. And, uh, Richard, please walk us through this.
Plat, 2019 plat 010, Lake Dreams is plating off lots 12 and 14 in Paradise Point, located on the east side of Lake, Lake Hendricks, and it's located right along the South Dakota-Minnesota state line. And preliminary plat for Paradise Point was approved by the board on August 7th, 2007, which was included in this report. And they've been plating off the lots as they were sold. The lots are lakefront lots, and Lot 12 contains 29,281 square feet, and Lot 14 contains 49,476 square feet, exceeding our 20,000 square foot minimum lot size requirements. And plat does meet our Brookings County subdivision ordinance and lake park requirements. The large lot, Lot 14, down the driveway, and there is access easement or part of that right here through to access that, this is Lot 12, right here. Smaller full sup of the two lots without the, the front page on there. Just the beacon map here showing the the layouts here, in, in red. This is Lot 14, and this is Lot 12, coming out. This is a preliminary plat. They're showing the lots 14 and Lot 12 right here. These other lots up in here have been platted already, so now there's just a few left. This is Lot 14, this is Lot 12, same layout, same schematic. And this is the beacon map, how it looks without the lots on there, the larger lots, be right here and right in here, and so. And that's all that I have.
And we'll open it up for discussion from the board. Board members have anything to say on this one?
This obviously follows a preliminary plat to the T, so I see no reason to not approve it. Since we approved the preliminary plat.
I was thinking very similar, and Richard, would you mind just? So, in order to enter Lot 14, that easement, that is part of Lot 14?
Yes.
Oh, I see, okay.
Little bottleneck right in there, it's right here, yep, come off here.
And they have an HOA?
And this, and this still has, this other lot still has easement through the driveway right here, the main drive.
I see, okay. That's all been maintained, HOA?
Yep, that will be maintained by a homeowners', homeowners' association, I believe.
Any other discussion from the board? All right, we'll open it up for the public hearing. Start out with any proponents in the audience, or I guess, uh, the applicant, if they're here and if they wanna speak on the subject.
Applicant is not here this evening.
Okay, proponents in the audience? Move on to opponents. All right, close the public hearing? And back to the board for any discussion, anything else we wanna say? Okay, all right, so with that, please, Richard, call for a vote.
Eriksen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Kleinjohn.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Spence.
Aye.
Jensen.
Yes.
McEwen.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Andy Langwich.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, moving on to item number 7D. Uh, 2019 plat 011, plat of Block 1 Goodfellow Acres addition in parcel 4 of the plat of Government Lot 1 in Government Lot 6, all in the northwest quarter, Section 31 Township 112 North, radius 51 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Ford, and is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McEwen, thank you. And, uh, Richard, when you're ready, a staff report, please.
2019 plat 01011, Steve Goodfellow is plating off 19.27 acres of an existing farmstead building site from the 194 acres located at 46035 201st Street, Bruce. And then we'll use the existing driveway to access the property located on 201st Street. And the plat meets the plating requirements of the 2016 comprehensive plan of the unincorporated, unincorporated rural area land use statement on page 24. Here's the plat, long narrow coming down into the building site, which is adequate in size, it's 33 feet. And a little, and wider as it goes down. Up abuts Mortimer Slough, which is just adjacent to Lake Oakwood, or Oakwood Lake, there. Here's the beacon map showing the proposed plat. Coming down, right, abuts right to Mortimer Slough, which around it is natural resources area, and around the building site, it is owned agricultural farm, for farmland for the buildings there, so. This is, goes around the outland and the trees, back around, kinda jogs, but that's the proposed plat, how that will look. Beacon map without the zooming in, here's the, follow the driveway down to, around the trees, back around and then back up. This is Mortimer Slough, which, like, Oakwood is right over, right down here, so, and that's all that I have.
All right, we'll open it up for discussion from the board. Kind of an awkward layout, it looks like, from first sight, so with that, sometimes plaits are necessary. Any thoughts from the board? Okay, um, with that, we're gonna open it up for the public hearing. First off, if the applicant is here, do they want to speak?
I don't believe they are.
Okay. We'll start out with proponents in the audience? And opponents? All right, carrying on, um, we'll close the public hearing, and back to the board. Again, seems pretty straightforward sometimes on some of these awkward layouts, especially by the lakes, natural resources, and ag zoning in the area, okay? All right, uh, Richard, please call for a vote.
Nelson.
Aye.
Kleinjohn.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Spence.
Aye.
Jensen.
Yes.
Bartley.
Aye.
McEwen.
Aye.
Eriksen.
Aye.
Andy Langwich.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So, moving on, um, we will next be acting as the Brookings County Board of Adjustment. So I'll read our opening statement. The Board of Adjustment is a nine-member board which has the power to hear requests for variances, conditional uses, appeals, and special exceptions. The concurring vote of two-thirds of the attending members is necessary for approval of any action by the board. A nine-member board requires six votes, and a six-member board requires six votes. In accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, we require a motion to approve a request before the request can be debated. As a matter of policy, all motions are made in the positive. The board, under specific powers granted it by the state, shall authorize variances from the zoning requirements where special conditions existing on the land will result in unnecessary hardship for the applicant. Financial disadvantage to the property owner shall not constitute proof of unnecessary hardship. And we'll start out with the first agenda item on the Board of Adjustment. And it looks like that is agenda item number eight. That is 2019 variance 005, Mark D. Norgard of Jarl Investments LLC has made an application, 2019 variance 005, to the Brookings County Board of Adjustment for a variance. Article 4 District Requirements, Chapter 4.03 LP, Lake Park District, Section 4.03.03 Density Area and Yard Regulation, Minimum Lakefront. The property is described as lots A and F of lots A, B, C, D, E, and F of Outlot 3 of the Tozer subdivision within Lake Ponce Heights, all in Government Lot 3 of Section 5 Township 112 North, radius 50 to West, Laketon Township, located at 127 South Lake Drive, Arlington, South Dakota, 57212. And we'll start out for, uh, this agenda item, do I have a motion to approve?
Approve approval.
Okay, Mr. Bartley, thank you, and a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who was it? Uh, thank you, Mr., okay, that was Darrell, and, um, okay. So we'll start out with, um, Richard. May I have, or may we have a staff report, please?
Yep. 2019 variance 005, Mark Norgard has applied for a variance to remove the existing house and build a new one with a 10-foot deck on the existing foundation, .39 feet, which is four and a half inches from the highest known watermark on Lake Ponce. A variance of 74 feet, seven and a half inches. The lake park, lakefront requirements are 75 feet from the highest known watermark and eight feet setback from the side. The applicant has hired an architect to assist with the design plan and the integrity of the foundation of the existing foundation of the proposed structure. The applicant's floor plan and site plans are attached. The proposed height will be, proposed house will be 35 feet in height at the peak of the roof. Three stories built on the existing foundation will have a 10-foot deck on the lakeside, four and a half inches from the high watermark. The newly elevated foundation was installed in June of 2007 for the existing house and an attached garage addition. The attached garage addition was not constructed. The foundation was installed prior to the current FEMA flood map, which was updated on June 24th, 2008. The applicant had the elevations on the property and sent it to FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, to be considered for removal. FEMA removed the structure, the house, from the flood plain as it meets the elevation requirements to be taken out of the flood plain. Tozer subdivision was replatted in 1984, and the attached plat shows lots F and A as highlighted. Lot A has an access easement on it for, to access lot E. Lot E is a lot which is directly west of the applicant. The applicant, the asset, access easement would prevent the structure from being moved farther back into lot A, and the proposed house will meet the proposed eight-foot side setbacks. The Brookings County Comprehensive Plan, Future Developed Land Use, Developed Lakes, Future Land Use, found on page fifty-eight in paragraph two, says it is likely that established developed areas of Lake Campbell, Lake Hendricks, Lake Titacahua, and Lake Ponce will experience continued development in variance varying degrees, while non-lake growth, non-lakefront growth potentially exists for all of the able lakes. Significant, significant lakefront areas is appropriately zoned and subdivided, in some cases, adjacent to Lake Titacahua, Lake Hendricks, and Lake Campbell. Letters were sent to the adjoining landowners and the Laketon Township chairman and clerk. And public notices were published in the Brookings Register on May twenty-first and twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, and the Arlington Sun on May twenty-third and thirtieth, and the applicant did ask that the hearing be postponed from the June fourth meeting to the, being there was a lack of a quorum that evening, to a special meeting date or the July meeting. And the applicant was not able to make the special meeting date of June twentieth, so we are hearing it this evening on June, July second. And the public notices were republished in the Brookings Register on June eighteenth and twenty-fifth, and the Arlington Sun on June twentieth and twenty-seventh. Variance application. Let's see applicant's lot and site plan with the, showing the setback, the deck, and the proposed cabin. Proposed elevation of the cabin, looking at it from... This, I believe, is the rear of the cabin. Cabin or residence there. This will be looking at it from the side. This is the east side. Doors open up east, proposed deck. Balcony above the second, part, part of the second story here, third story back here. This is the lakeside view. Proposed deck here, three stories, showing it there. This will be the west elevation. Floor plan, the, the main floor here. Second floor, great room and living area and bedrooms. And third floor, bedrooms and bath, and out to the deck on the second floor. My pluses and minuses mixed up here. This is a copy of the plat. This is lot F. This is lot A, which has the easement on there to get into lot E, which is twenty-four feet wide, that there's access easement going into the last, this lot right here. Which prevents the house from sliding back farther into that, so. Just the proposed, this is the, the beacon map, the red area is a floodplain. It is, if it was in the floodplain, it would, this would be red, but it has been removed, so that's taken out of there. This shows the floodplain comes up to the edge of the structures all the way along here. These are pictures of... The area, this is looking at it towards the north. Here, towards this is the proposed garage area that he was going to build. This is the east side of the cabin, looking towards the lake. The west side here. This would be the northwest corner of the deck and house right here, showing the piers, supporting the deck and the water level there. And this is looking from the west corner, looking, west corner of the deck, looking towards the east. This is looking from his neighbor's house to the east of him, looking back towards the west, showing the high watermark here. And water had been up to this area at the time when these were taken. We were back, back up there later on, and there's a support post right here that had been jarred loose or moved from the time this picture was taken to the second one earlier with that second storm and elevations, water, increase in water elevations that came through. This is, just looking towards the east, the other, that support post was right in here that had got moved out. Just looking towards the, the high watermark could be right here at this, this point, estimated point. And it would still be in line with the other cabins going up and down the northwest to southeast portions on there. And that's all. We have received comments, additional comments that we'll hear during that time during the public hearing. And that's all that I have.
All right, thank you, Richard. Um, okay, so we'll start out with the applicant.
Board discussion from the board.
Okay.
Yeah. If he wants to add anything, yep.
Okay. All right, we'll start out with the applicant. Please come forward, state your name, and tell us a little bit about your plans other than what Richard's kind of talked about, and we'll go from there.
I'm Mark Norgard. About fourteen, fifteen years ago, we bought Arlington Beach, which had, like, twenty-nine nineteen fifty trailers on it, and it was in pretty bad shape. And we have developed that into a complex that has nineteen cabins on it. I think if any of you would have seen it or would go out and look at it, you'd be quite impressed with it. It's, uh, it, it turned out very nice. This cabin was another cabin that was, that I bought about the same time. And we put this, we, we brought it up out of a low area and put a new foundation under it with, uh, back the foundation extended for some possible future, uh, building, which is the foundation that we would be building on today. You know, it's, um... It's going to be a, it'll be a very nice cabin, nice looking. Um, I, you do have a sheet from some, some of the people that are at ABR today that have cabins there, and they say they are not, not opposed to it. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Of course, being the designer, I'm always proud of the work that we've...
And sir, real quick, it's just kind of a matter of policy, state your name for...
I'm Andrew Mitchell.
Thank you, go ahead.
Architect. Apologize, I get ahead of myself at times. Being the designer, of course, I'm proud of everything that we put up here that has my name on it. But I do believe what we're doing is a positive asset to the community and definitely brings the overall image up. And with the design, I think, probably backtrack a couple of things in terms of the most important aspect of this. Per what Richard Hagen, the comment, Mr. Hagen made and the client, we do not change the envelope or the setback at all. We are building on the existing foundation, and the frontage lines up with all of the existing houses, so we're maintaining the context in terms of the frontage. Um, I had some feedback from some other people that were confused, thinking that we're building further forward, and we're not. And then the design, we tried to mitigate the bulk of the building through use of a number of things. If, uh, now that's a very good elevation, you can see that I wrapped around the first floor a bit of stone to create kind of a podium that the two floors sit upon, so that I create kind of like a one-plus-two-story building that cuts it down a little bit lower. And then worked to make it meet the community a little bit more. We started with a more modernist design and incorporated some hip roofs as opposed to what the client would have preferred, some nice flat roofs and more punched, uh, designs. And used materials that would be in keeping with the lakefront community, river rock, lap siding, shingles. And then we got a little daring in using just a little bit of corrugated siding, just to have a little bit more of a, of a fun rustic modern look. And so I believe that we've done a very good job of moderating, moderating the mass of the, of the building and bring it down to a little bit more human scale and fitting in with the overall context. And again, we're building on the existing foundation, so we're not changing the envelope. And in doing though, in doing so too, um, per the request we put up, when you look at what the seventy-five-foot zoning setback with the new definition of, uh, the highest known watermark, that means that seventy-five foot would make the lot all but unusable. That pretty much covers what I would say from the architect's standpoint. And actually, the height is not thirty-five foot, it's thirty-four foot six inches. Semantics. But then I, that's pretty much what I'd have to say. Any questions?
Um, any questions yet? I think usually kind of what we do, we'll have a group discussion amongst us after we've heard from everybody else, and...
Okay, just one other comment. I wanted to wait and see whether, um, surfaced. There was an issue interpreting, interpreting the zoning as thirty-five feet or two and a half stories. With the word er, or, I interpreted that as thirty-five stories. Uh, we have some flexibility there, a little bit in terms of what we can do with the roofline, and I have some sketches, but we prefer that you consider it as designed if we can.
All right, if we have any other questions for you, we'll call you up. But, thank you. All right. Okay, so we'll start out with any discussion from the board. And so as a reminder to the board members, once we hear from the audience, we can always talk about this afterwards as well, so. Um, right off the bat, is there any questions or any comments that the board members want to make?
So is, is the deck the only part, the lower deck, the only part that is extending beyond the row of the lineup of the houses along that shorebag?
From my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the original outline, I should say, the original base? For lack of a, foundation, thank you, um, is still the same, so the deck will be extending out.
Extending out. And there's no room to back the house up?
Um, I think right now, that, that might be a question for our applicant, maybe once we're done with some of the discussion. Be probably a good question to ask, I'd agree. Okay, any other questions from the board members? As, or comments?
To your statement of, they can back the house up, the way I read it in here, they can't?
I'm sorry.
I believe that they cannot back the house up, it is prohibited by the easement into lots whatever behind it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good point, Mr. Ford. Any other questions or comments from the board that we can discuss?
So the foundation is already over? The watermark or the deck is?
The foundation is, is within the watermark, correct? Or, you know...
The, the foundation is back behind the watermark, ten feet.
So that's every, there's no objection to the foundation, what he wants to build as far as that goes?
Yep, it's the distance right up here in the corner of the very north, northeast corner of the deck, protrudes out into the waters where the high watermark is.
So the existing foundation is seventy-five feet back of the high watermark?
No, the existing foundation is ten feet back, ten feet, seven inches or whatever.
Before those regulations were put in place.
Yep, so this is kind of the, the grandfathered setback, so it would not meet today's, um, Lake Park District, um, plan.
Now, the ten-foot, two inches is the width of the deck, the foundation is back here, so it'd be ten foot farther away from the lake.
Yep.
If they did not have a deck on there versus a patio, that would decrease that setback. But with the deck being attached to the house, it goes to the edge of the deck as far as being the closest point to the highest known watermark.
Well, and even with the setback, it's, it's only, what, four inches or so from the high watermark or something?
Correct.
So that's kind of an interesting thought.
Is the new, is the new deck the same size as the existing deck?
Yes.
And then, um, the side yards, from my understanding, those meet...
Correct, it does meet the side yard setback of eight feet on each side.
Um, and also some history I was curious about, so I was still on the board when similar plan was denied, so is there anything that's different about this?
At that time, the denial back in, on there, there was a deck on the here that was coming out along here.
Okay.
That would, it was encroaching on the eight-foot side setback. That's, was one of the reasons why it was denied, and I believe the applicant probably actually pulled his application after that.
Okay, thank you. Pulled the application.
So the property directly to the right is an easement to the lake? That's a street, or listed as a street access?
Yes, that would, that's, that's access for the lake.
Is it public access or private access?
It'd be considered a public access for the people that live on that development.
So there's not much of an encroachment there other than on the public access as far as that, that side of the home?
Yep.
But the deck is encroaching upon the eight-foot setback, or we don't count the deck on that encroachment?
The deck is going out even with the side of the house.
Oh yes, okay, the picture looked like it was bigger.
Uh, that's the existing deck, the way it was...
Well, that's existing deck, okay.
Correct.
Wasn't their deck on the side of the house, uh, coming out of the second level?
What was that?
On their drawing, wasn't their deck on the second level out to the east side?
No, that's going towards the lakeside. That's on the second. Here, here's the street right here that you were talking about, Mr. Bartley.
Yeah.
That is still there.
Yeah.
It does not encroach into this area. This is a floor plan, this is the, the deck on the second story right here.
Go down on the picture.
Yep. This is, this is the west side. And this is the, this is the second level of the deck. This is the lakeside. Right here, this is the, right here is where the highest known watermark is, coming out ten feet, right at that corner. And this is staying even with the edge of the house.
And then that easement is on the...
Easement is on the back side of the house.
On the back side of the house. Any other questions from the board or comments amongst ourselves before we open it up for the public discussion?
This is easement on lot A right here, twenty-four feet across that to get into lot E.
Right, okay, so that was my other question, and... Uh, the, it, is it my understanding, yeah, there's, within that easement, there's a structure on kind of like the A and B?
This is lot E right here, or lot B. This is, this is the adjoining landowner's lot B, and this is his garage or car park right there.
I see, oh, okay, okay, I see, so that's how it's getting at.
So the existing foundation is about right in there. So there's a few feet that, you know, between here and there. It could maybe be slid back a little bit, I'm not for certain on that, but that's... I'm not sure where the twenty-four-foot mark comes in.
Anything else from the board as of now?
What, how high is the peak on the buildings adjacent to it?
On the two-story ones back here on ABR? Or the other ones?
The ones on each side.
On each side of it. These are single-story on this side, and these are all single-story, I believe. There is one or two two-story cabins. Not for certain what side they're on, but there is one, one or two cabins that are two stories.
There's five two-story cabins in the cabin, and the...
Just a second. So right now, we're amongst ourselves. So do we have a question for Mr. Norgard as of now? Or should we address that at the end?
We can address that at the end.
Okay, yeah.
When you can clarify that.
Okay, so we'll jot that down as maybe a question at the end for Mr. Norgard. Any other questions or comments from the board? Anything to jot down for questions at a later time as well for the applicant?
So is the deck built on the existing foundation also, the lower deck, or does it extend 10 feet beyond that?
The existing deck extends 10 feet beyond the foundation.
So it's not...
It's supported by piers on the very outside end.
Anything else?
You did say a couple of them peers, or one of them was pushed out.
When we went back up there the second time, I took pictures earlier because I was up in the area, and I knew this was going to be on the agenda, so I took pictures of it that day. And when we went back up later, we stopped back in and took, it was one of these right in here that had pushed down and was, had fallen over. One of these cement block support, right in this area.
What date did you take the picture?
One was May 6th, the other date was May 31st.
All right, anything else from the board as of now? Sounds like we'll have some questions later, but, all right. Keep your pens handy, write down some stuff if you need to, and we'll start with the audience then. And before we actually open it up to the audience, as I believe the applicant had actually told me already, there were actually some proponents as well as some opponents. So it looks like there was a petition started, there were six, excuse me, six proponents, and the people who signed this document said, "To whom it may concern, I am not opposed to granting the variance for Jarl Investments LLC at 127 South Lake Drive, Arlington, South Dakota." And I have, of course, the dates that they signed this, their name, phone number, and their address in case if we had any questions. So again, there were six proponents for this that we had done? Oh, sure. Okay.
That was a document we received this evening from Mr. Norgard.
All right, and it looks like we did also hear from one opponent. Okay, okay. So we'll start out with the audience then, and we're going to start out just by simply listening to the proponents of this agenda item. So if you are a proponent, we're going to limit everybody's time to at least, or minimum of, maximum, excuse me, of five minutes. Please come forward, state your name, and why you think you are a proponent of this agenda item.
Hello, my name is Sean Erickson. I am the owner of one of the two stories that you talk about, number 13 at ABR. I just came here tonight to express, you know, our support for Mark in his endeavor to build this cabin. The cabin, as you've seen in the pictures, is in disrepair. It is certainly, the plans, as you've seen, will certainly be a good addition to ABR. And like Mark had said, he does, he's developed that land over the past, you know, 15, 20 years. He spent a lot of money and time in investing into that area. I have no doubt that this project will also be a very big positive for the entire neighborhood as well, so, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is John Johnson. I'm also a landowner or cabin owner at ABR. Again, my cabin is four, would be four down from the proposed building here. As Sean mentioned, the cabin is in disrepair now. Everything that has been done at ABR to this point that Jarl has been involved in is outstanding. The properties are all well taken care of, and this project would only serve to enhance our property values and add to the enjoyment that we have at Arlington Beach. Thanks.
Thank you again. And any other? Got another comment.
Good evening. My name is Alan Dixon. I am the current, one of the current operators at the Boathouse Bar and Grill that's on the Arlington Beach Resort property. Just came here once again in support of Mark. So what I understand that he's asking for is to build a cabin on the exact same footprint that he currently has a cabin on, including that deck. So like the pictures show, that current cabin is, it's old, it's taken some abuse, it could use a lot of stuff. Unfortunately, I just, I think it's way better to put a new building in its place. He's well, would be well within his rights to leave that old cabin there, the old deck there. I don't think it would do anybody any justice to just leave that there. It's just going to fall apart on its own regardless of high watermarks or anything else. So a lot of the riffraff that you saw kind of washed up on the beach here where I think they referred to it as, you know, the water was up there that high earlier. I mean, yes, some waves brought some stuff up there, but the standing water was never at that exact level. We've been out there, well, okay, so as a matter of fact, we reside in Cabin Number Six, which is directly south of the proposed lot that Mark is going to build on. So if there's any concerns about height or anything like that, I guess I would say that we would probably stand the most to lose, because we are, his cabin would be directly between ours and the lake. I have absolutely no problem with it. All those cabins in that back area are all two levels anyway, so even if you built, or, excuse me, single levels, so even if you build a single level in front of it, it's still going to obstruct any view. So whether it's two levels or three levels, I don't think it would really matter to me. So anyway, hopefully you can all approve this. Thank you.
Any other proponents in the audience? All right. All right, well, we will move on then to the open discussion, or excuse me, the public hearing for the opponents. So similar situation, we had a comment that was given to our office, and we'll put it All right, so my attempt to read this here. So it looks like there was a phone call on July 1st at 3:20 PM to the Brookings County Development Department from Cliff Verbeek, 132 South Lake Drive, Arlington, South Dakota, 57212. He was unable to attend the meeting and wished to comment. His statement was very much opposed to Mark Norgard's request. Reason stated, "Not a good neighbor and worried about water level, doesn't take care of things and items floating in my yard." All right. So again, we will open this up for public discussion for opponents, and same deal, time is limited to five minutes per person, and state your name, so we have that for our records.
My name is Bob Rubish. My wife and I own the property at 134, which is next to a cliff that you just had up on the deal. We are opposed to that, simply if you go back to the pictures that Richard had on there of the deck that's on there now, you can see that it's in not the best shape. But where our problem is, that deck, and in the pictures even, it even shows that it's been used for storage. You've got lawn chairs up there, you've got a grill up there, you've got 20-pound propane tanks up there. Those were up there all spring. They were up there before ice out, before the high water. It kind of shows that Mr. Norgard doesn't have any concerns with the neighbors' property or respect it by leaving that kind of stuff up there in that kind of situation. It's, to me, these rules and regulations are put in for a purpose, and I think that purpose is to make sure that we're all good stewards of the lake, that we need this lake to be useful for my grandchildren and their children. We've had debris this fall, or this spring, that has come from the cabins of ABR that are on lakeside. Some of those decks are starting to collapse from the water situation. We picked up debris of steps and everything off of those decks. And right now, we are sitting over four foot over full mouth, and we're in July. If this water don't go down, we ain't seen nothing yet. That record that we had in 2011 will fall. And I think that if we're going to keep allowing things get closer and closer, we're asking for more and more trouble. As you can see on that picture there too, what I was getting at is the deck there, that corner on the top left-hand side there is that corner out towards the lakeside, that is blocks of wood that are wedged between two rocks, holding that corner up. That steel post out there is holding the rock from falling, from rolling into the lake. Reason why the steel post is there. Like I said, it doesn't seem like there's much concern for that part, and we're just trying to look out for our own property from being damaged. And we do also have a petition that we went around with. I didn't know we were supposed to send it to you guys before meetings or whatever. I've got it here. There are 16 names on it, if I can get that to you guys, or... Oh, here it is. Oh, thanks.
Okay, so I'm going to take an attempt to read it here. So we, the filing residents of South Lake Drive on Lake Ponce at South Dakota, are opposed to the application made by Mark D. Norgard of Jarl Investments LLC for a variance, minimum lakefront, for the property located at 127 South Lake Drive, Arlington, South Dakota, 57212. And off the bat, do you know how many names?
16.
16, okay, 16 opponents, it looks like. Okay. All right, thank you for sharing.
Okay, thank, I leave this here?
Yes, she can bring it up here.
We'll keep it on our, for our records.
You can have your pad back here. Heem's on there too.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay? And anyone else? Please step forward, say your name and your comments.
So my name's Steve Sunday. I live at 136 South Lake Drive, and I think, you know, what this really comes down to is Mark, like what he stated, he has done a great job at ABR, right? But you look at some of the other properties he owns, and I don't know the relationship, if he actually owns the four cabins that are up front when you pull that up, but if you would go by there right now with a high watermark, the decks, one of the decks on the last one is still demolished, right? And when we're talking, it's been a tough year up at the lake. This water continues to rise. I think we just got another three-inch rise over, you know, like the last week, and the state of South Dakota, I think, has told us, this is going to be the new norm. So if we're going to allow people to actually build closer to the lake, and you look at that structure that he wants to build on, where he's saying he's going to put a three-story house, and we talk about the aesthetics of the neighborhood, so we're coming from the people you see sitting behind me. We are those neighbors on the left-hand side, single-story, you know, cabins, and now somebody wants to put up a three-story monster building that's sitting right out in front. And this place where Mark wants to actually build this, this has gone neglected for, I think I came up here in 2011, nothing has been done to this property. It's sat there and essentially rotted, and now he wants to, you know, just flip it and come up with this great big huge structure, and we're going, okay, you've done a great job with ABR, I appreciate ABR. I go over to the bar, you know, we, you know, we go over there and eat and everything like that. Mark has done a good job with the other properties, but now we're going, this is not sensible to what we have going on with the lake and the lake level just rising like that. If you put a three-story property up like that and extend it further towards the lake, look, the only thing that's going to happen is demolished, right? And kind of like Bob was saying, we end up with all this stuff floating into our yards from people that neglect their yards up there, that don't take stuff up, you know, and pick it up. So it's just, to me, when you, I wish I could take you all up there and just drive through the property for once. Mark says we got two stories. Yes, he does have two-story buildings, but they're sitting back from the lake, right? Everything coming down the lake, including our property, is their one-story. Everything coming down the lake, including our property, is their one-story. And now he wants to put this great big, almost apartment-like thing up, sticking right up in front, and I'm going, "How can this be? And aren't you worried knowing that this lake has not gone down for two years, right? And it's not going down, it's not receding now, it continues to go up? That if you put something like that, just sticking right out there, it kind of ruins the whole lake effect for all of us up there." So we're just saying, take into consideration what's going on in the lake, the lake levels, look at that structure, and existing foundation that hasn't been taken care of for over 10 years, and now he wants to come up there and put up this gigantic building? We're just going, as neighbors for him, it's just like, we, we all want to get along up there, but this is just unheard of and does not even fit in. And we are just worried as lake owners that if he would do that and with the high water, that we're only looking for damage, right? And then once again, the deck collapses, all that crap, all that stuff comes flying up into our yards and stuff like that, and it's just not sensible. And we're just asking-
Just so you know, sir, I hate to interrupt, but one more minute.
...like that consideration going left or right, right? Just look at us. We appreciate what he's done at ABR. There's no doubt about that. He, Mark has done a good job there, but it's just that up front, and I wish you would've took pictures going back towards his other rental cabins, because all those decks are in the water right now. And constantly pumping water out of their basement.
Thirty-seven, okay. Good? So I should probably mention, I'll let you know when there's one more minute and 30 seconds left, just so you guys know. All right. Anybody else in the audience?
Bob Westall. I live at 198 South Lake Drive. I am also on the Water Project Board. And the previous gentleman is right, the river, the lake is up at 1656.51 right now, and it's around all those decks. And I don't know why we want to keep moving out into the water. It's been lucky that it hasn't been taken out by ice. The ice this year went to the southwest, but if it went to the south, it would take all those decks off. And the water coming in during those northeast winds was hitting the front of those cabins, and some of the cabins had siding taken off, and it was splashing clear over beyond the backside of them. So I just urge you not to approve the deck or approve it.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Oliver Bortman. I live two cabins down from that mess that he has there. That mess that you see there, it started out in 2011. And it has been that way ever since. In 2011, it washed out a whole bunch of dirt under there, and all these big humongous rocks are setting on top of one another. Me and my neighbor one day, and this was towards fall, were out walking, and we seen a bunch of little kids under there. They were going under there and hiding from other kids. So we went over there and chased them out of there, and we took those rocks and pushed them in. He had all summer long to take care of this. He takes care of nothing up there. It's, and this guy here does exactly what he wants to do. Whatever you decide here tonight, if he doesn't like it, he might just go do something. He, one day, and I'm just going to tell you this, it's probably not the place to tell you, but I'm going to tell you now anyway. One day I went to the lake to enjoy the lake. I'd been there for 26 years. I turned in the driveway, I looked down there, my fence is gone. No fence. So I drive down there, and here, they are digging up the easement that they have to drive through for the middle cabin. I says, "This is my property, what are you doing?" "We're going to put a road through here." I said, "No, you can't, this is my property." So call Sheriff and Hall Works, get the whole thing out here. So I finally got fed up with it, and I called him, and I said, "Mark, let's just kind of work this out. I'll sell you that little 12-foot piece back there." He says, "Why should I buy it from you? I already own it." Right over the phone. But anyway, it should not go out here, but I oppose this 100%. I got one other thing. Can you go down to the backside of that cabin there where you can see the other cabins? Yes, you see that little cabin right there? You see how much taller this cabin is? Can you imagine that with a three-story house? You come outside, they're that close, it'd look like, you know, you'd have to look up. He likes to do stuff like that. So all I can say is that I oppose this big time. I've had nothing but problems with him for 14 years.
Thank you for your comments. All right. Anyone else in the audience for the opposing?
Madam Chair, I'd just make a couple of points here.
Please.
Luke Muller, First District Association of Governments. I just had a couple of questions that I thought I'd read in that you, it'd be nice to at least address here. First question I had, just in looking at it, and these are probably for the applicant, a few of them are. The first one is, "Does the existing structure foundation encroach one foot into the easement?" I thought it looked like one of them indicated that it was maybe one foot closer to the lot line. The easement looks like it's 40 feet in total, 24 feet and 16 feet. It looked like the foundation was 15 feet from that south property line. So I just kind of wanted to clarify, I know that's not what your variance is about, but I wanted to clarify, you're not permitting something to go over the easement? The, yeah. The second question is that when the applicant comes up, if he could describe what the construction of the lowest deck is, if it's going to have a retaining wall, or if they're going to have pilings, or how that's going to be constructed. And then, the third question I had is probably more for the board, or maybe Richard, and that is whether or not the board has a history of allowing the replacement of non-conforming structures that don't further encroach upon the setbacks from existing structures. And so that might be something you want to have, whether it be for the findings, pro or con, you may want to make that note. Those are the only things that I had.
All right, thank you for your comments. We appreciate that. All right, so anybody else in the audience, as for opponents, bearing any words from the audience? Okay, all right. So we will close the public hearing portion of the meeting, and we're going to come back to the board with any discussion. I know a lot of us have been some frivolous note-takers here, so, and writing down some of this stuff. So first off, anything with the board? Any comments? We'll obviously end up getting our applicant back up here, but anything amongst us as of now?
How much closer is the new deck going to be to the high watermark as opposed to the old deck as it is now?
Sir, please, please, we'll get to you, once you have the chance. So we're jotting down that question. Anything else from the board?
Richard, if you could scroll down to the picture of the deck with the support posts, the one with the other corner where it has the wood blocks, go down one, right there. I'm curious what them blocks are structured on, if that's where we, those little type of support posts which would set there.
Right there where my hand, where the hand is?
Right, no, move here to the far side, far picture, right there. Is there supposed to be supports that far out in the lake, or is that acting as a post, support post, an extra five feet farther in than it should be? Because realistically, that move, if he was going to use the existing pillars, right now, he's actually five feet farther out into the lake than he says that he is, roughly. I don't, ballparking it from the picture.
So those additional support things for posts, whatever they are, yeah, it's going farther out into the lake than stated in his proposal?
I do not see them in the picture from the west side.
Yeah.
I believe it's the west side, that's the east side, I believe.
And then as for the structure, we're obviously going to be asking the applicant, you know, kind of that foundation thing, that's kind of a scary thought, and then addressing, you know, is this really going to be as far as it's going to go out, or is there going to be some additional support systems? Okay? Anything else with the board, questions or comments? Okay, all right. Let's go ahead and get our applicant back up here. So if you would, wouldn't mind coming back up? And we'll go through the rigmarole again, please state your name. And if you have any questions on what we, we do need to address each one of these questions, so, you know, you can start out, and then we'll, we'll make sure that each one of these are answered, and if they haven't been, we'll just let you know.
Mark D. Norgard.
Okay.
Go ahead.
And Andrew Mitchell.
Thank you.
I guess I would, if there's any questions that you guys would have, please forward. I mean, I don't know why I would build a property when I have, you know, the quality of an ABR and the well-thought-out progress it is, and to build something that would be trashy or not nice. Why would I do that? I would be devaluing my own property. And the one opponent, there, it's, there's an easement that goes through the three properties, and there's been, there's been a feud, he has never wanted to ever let that easement go through. And it's an important easement to the whole area there. So, I mean, this is a war that's been going on for, since '11, and it's pretty unfortunate that you go to the lake and you have a neighbor that is, you know, it's just, it happens, but...
So, help me if I'm wrong in interpreting what I had heard from Mr. Muller. So we, the question was, the existing structure possibly one feet into the easement? Is that kind of what we were looking at? So can you address that?
No, it did not go, it does not go into the easement. The, the existing structure did not go to the easement. There's an easement on the back part of the property, if you, if you pull up the, and it goes through all three of the cabins, which goes up to the other road. There's an easement there, and it's never, he's always said he's not going to let us, let anybody else go through there. Well, it's an, it's an easement that needs to be opened up.
Okay.
Goes A, B, A, B, and C. And C, if you would look at it, he has blocked it with a building, and there's no passage through there, because you have to run over his building to get through it. So, I mean, it's kind of, they're, the opponents aren't opposing me building a nice structure there. They're just, they just got, they're just mad at me for the last, you know, X years, and, I mean, there's nothing I can do about that, I guess. Anyway, that's-
Okay.
-that kind of explains the-
And then a big question was also the construction of the lowest deck and the foundation.
Well, the foundation could be-
Help us with that.
I'll let, I'll let the architect take care of that, okay?
Please, yeah.
Mark and I have been talking back and forth in terms of what we want to do with the foundation, and we've discussed a number of solutions. Number one, the foundation as it is clearly does not meet modern code standards, and certainly is not something that we'd want to leave standing with, a project such as this, where we're putting so much time and effort into the quality of it. We have, Mark has proposed a number of solutions. We've been talking also to Richard Hogg in regards to how the deck is interpreted, because of the planning, planning department interprets a wood deck as being attached to the building, and therefore, the setback is measured from that. And if we build with some other construction materials, such as concrete slab, then it would not be considered as such, and that would also change the definition of our setback. And the most current conversation I've had with the client is, he wished to build up a concrete retaining wall up and around the existing perimeter of the deck, that is, completely tear down the deck and build in a concrete retaining wall. I've proposed a couple other alternate solutions, something that is robust and can resist the wave action and not be rooted out, and also resist the action of the, of the ice as it pushes up against it. And we will have an engineer onboard, and we'll be talking with our engineer in terms of proper solutions that will be strong, safe, and any solution would most likely be a concrete wall, and I proposed to him pavers, because again, pavers in there, you backfill it, and if the well, if the soil moves, it's easy to fix, and you won't have any kids running underneath a concrete wall, a block wall, or a timber wall. And again, we are building to exactly the same envelope of the existing one to the edge and face of the existing deck. And in this deck is, again, in the same context as all the other decks, in terms of, the front face of the deck is in line with the decks all the way down, and its condition pretty much mirrors the decks of most of the cabins out here. So anything we do is going to be improve it. Any questions on that?
I have been at Lake Ponce for, coming on, 70 years. I grew up right just south of the lake. I would not build something that is, that is going to, that I think is going to be just washed out, etc. I mean, but just wouldn't do it, so, thank you.
Okay. Let's see.
As far as for the history, I'd have to go back and look through the, through the files. I don't have that right at my fingertips here right now for, as far as the history of that goes, what Mr. Muller was, was looking for.
And so, it's on record and everything. We, we're also kind of, we just redid a lot of these lake park districts. So what was once an option now is not, and, I mean, this goes with all districts, so something to kind of think about as well, especially with this situation. Okay? Let's see. Okay, that's all I wrote down. Let's turn it over to the board members. Anything that you have questions strictly to the applicant and the architect that we have not addressed?
So you're saying that the new deck will not extend any farther into the lake than the existing deck?
No.
Question to the construction of the deck and replacement of the pylons and the piers that are out there. I mean, that can be done because it's an existing pylon or deck. In other words, you could go in and fix those and replace those and build a deck exactly like it is now if you needed to. In other words, it's maintenance on the deck. It's maintenance to do the pylons over.
That's essentially the assumption, and we're using the grandfather clause. The grandfather clause in terms of that's the existing deck, and we're, we're building same to same in terms of function and place and location, and building better.
I guess my point is really simple. If the other landowners have decks of similar pilings that hold those decks, and the water washes them out of the rocks or the ice taken, they're able to go back and rebuild their decks on their existing site. Is that correct?
Richard?
In other words, if it gets taken out by Mother Nature, whatever, high water, ice, whatever, they can go back and rebuild on the, and put in new pylons and put in the deck.
They would have to get a building permit for that, and/or if it's in the water, get Corps of Engineer and/or State Department of Game, Fish, and Parks for like a shoreline modification to, for their upgrade for that.
Right. So I guess my guess again is, you know, I, as I look at this particular piece of property and understand the concerns, there's all kinds of arguments going on here. It does meet the requirements for height, whether it says two and a half stories or 35 feet, it does meet the requirements of 35 feet. The design obviously is, is to maximize the use of the space. I see this happening in awful lot of lakefront properties all over the South Dakota and Minnesota, where a cabin becomes deteriorated for whatever reasons, and it's not feasible to replace it. And Lake Park District regulations are kind of designed primarily for new construction, necessarily. The hardship here, as I look at it, is not necessarily financial, because you could certainly build a smaller cabin and, and leave it at that. But the, the hardship is strictly that those regulations that are now in place weren't in place when this was designed. And I think, as I look at it, that's the hardship, is, is you can't improve the property as much as would be feasible or financially feasible today. It's a hardship in that regard, and so, is it going to look better than what's there? No question. Obviously, it'll look better. Obviously, we're not going to let it deteriorate with the investment you're going to make in it. We're not going to have a piece of property that deteriorates the neighborhood in terms of trash, in terms of decks breaking off and littering the lake. I think that's going to be taken care of. I agree, this is an unusual year. We have a lot of damage on, on Lake Ponce this year from the weather, and we have a lot of decks that are damaged, a lot of cabins that are damaged, and a lot of, hopefully get some FEMA help if I was correct, we'll see. But, yeah, you got some arguments with some access, and I can see the argument on the easement there, with the property owner next door building on the easement. That could also probably be done on the easement on lot C on the other side, but apparently they've, they've got access, so they don't really need the easement. Maybe that could be vacated and under some other action, but you're going to have to allow the easement to, to the metal cabin, B, that's not going to change. So, again, that restricts you as far as what you can do with the property. Those are just comments that I have made. And I think, and again, I'm due to this particular planning commission, I've been on planning commissions for a number of years, but do we have other instances where the planning commission is approved? These types of developments on lots because of the new regulations don't really fit?
Well, each variance is on a case-by-case basis, and without going back, as far as, for ones this close, since I've been here 14 years, we've never had one this, this close within inches of the setback on there in that particular case, but otherwise, each, each one's on a case-by-case basis.
Have there been some we've approved?
And some have been approved and some have been denied, yes.
But we don't have statistics on those.
No.
Any other comments from the board? Looks like some of you have some comments. What do you think, Mr. Kleinjohn?
Yeah, you pick me. We've denied things that are way, way farther away than this. I don't know how I can support this.
Especially some of you by the lake, or live on lakes, I should say, or anything like that. Always value your opinions, anything? Anything else? Mr. Spence, please.
Well, I don't live on the, by a lake.
That's fine, your comments are obviously very welcome.
But I guess this is directed to Richard. This, I recall in your findings of fact, assessment, there's some kind of statement about proposed structures shall not affect the character otherwise demonstrated through the local area. Is, is that, that's not the exact.
There is a statement in there that's not generally of the same occurring nature, they would have to amend the zoning ordinance.
Now, the reason I asked that question, one of the opponents mentioned how this large structure is, is not going to match what's going on otherwise in the develop, development there. So that's what brought that thought up.
Mr. Jensen, you've been quiet. What's your thoughts?
Well, I agree kind of with what Mr. Bartley says, but you got to remember, our previous commissioner said on this board was pretty adamant on what our job is here, is to preserve the lakes. And I've been on the board, I don't know, 14, 15 years, and I've never seen a variance of this size granted before. It's, it's pretty tough.
Mr. Ford?
I'm kind of in line with Mr. Kleinjohn here, and it, it's quote, the thing that concerns me is the shoreline erosion there, and with Mr. Spence, I mean, you're putting Godzilla next to a gecko. And it's, it's going to stand out from the middle of the lake for every eyesight on the lake. I, I don't think that that's right with the other landowners around it. I, I'm not saying it's going to be an eyesore, because it looks to me like it would be an amazing structure. But I don't know that it's going to fit the lay of the land. I believe it was last month, or the month before, where we had the gentleman apply for the easement to be closer, to be in line, but we also checked with that. He was closer, but he was also, was it 35 feet above the shore? If I remember right, and above the water level, and stayed in line with the houses to the right of him, and then to the left was an open lot that maintained the same shoreline. I, I don't know that I can support this either. I, I think there's give and take, and it seems like there's, something needs to be worked out beforehand.
Mr. Nelson, we always value your opinion. Any thoughts on that?
It's kind of tough for me, but, you know, I, I don't know, of course I'd like 75, but anyway, I just, I don't know, I just kind of, kind of like some of this stuff, so I'd be, I'd be positive this time.
Mr. Erickson, you've also been pretty quiet. Thoughts on the subject?
I live on a lake.
Yeah.
And I'm 70 feet from, I'm 70 feet from the, my watermark.
Okay.
And all of our, all our houses are pretty much the same. When you talk about size and, not the actual shape, but the height and so on.
Sure.
Where you go, and you got a three-story here, and a single story, is that right on each side mark? Yes.
Mr. McKeon, we heard a little bit, but anything else you'd like to add?
I'm not sure that I can support it either from the standpoint that I under, I realize that on the deck, that it appears that the homeowner is willing to assume the risk of the perils of building that close to the high watermark. And I don't have a problem with that as much as I do the three stories. And I think the three stories would be out of conformity with what's going on there, and would not only block the view of those houses behind it, but also would look like a albatross on the shoreline.
So.
All right. So, and then kind of heard from Mr. Bartley, kind of my thoughts, listening to a few things. The conforming thing is something that I'm kind of worried about as well. As for maintenance of the property, that's been kind of a big question, that's been a thought, you know, if, if, especially the the structure stability, if that's not being maintained right now, which does worry me, that's something that worries me in the future. Increasing water levels as people keep tiling, I mean, we all know the future, and some thoughts there, natural springs, stuff like that. And then the setback from the four inches from the high watermark, that's probably my biggest concern. So that's, that's my comments. But, all right, so.
So.
Back to the board.
Can I speak?
And Mr. Muller? Sounds like you had some comments, questions?
Yeah, I just, from a standpoint of clarification, Luke Muller, again, First District Association of Governments. I just wanted to point out something with regards to the non-conforming language, and this may make things harder or easier depending on how you look at it, board. But I wanted to make it clear, I, there's been some reference to a grandfather clause, and without getting into a 45-minute discussion about what that means, that's actually the non-conforming use language of the ordinance, which means that a use existed before we had the rule. It is allowed to continue until it is removed or discontinued. The, the only reason I bring that up is that if the structure is removed, it needs a variance to go back there. And so my point is that if the concern of the board is the deck and only the deck, I don't want you to lose sight of the fact that he would still need a variance to replace the, the house that's there. And so if your concern is the deck only, I still want to make you aware of the fact that for him to take that off and make any improvement on there, he's probably still going to need a variance in order to put, be it a one-story, two-story, three-story, whatever your ordinance allows, he's still going to need a variance to put that there. And so I just want to make that clear that I, this isn't just about a deck, it's about because of a 75-foot setback, he really can't put anything on that front end there.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you for the clarification. Okay. All right, so with that.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
One more comment on the, the 35 feet of the two and a half stories. Biggest thing there is fire protection. The three stories, the smaller departments don't have the ladder trucks to access that third story versus the two and a half story, so, and it's 35 to the peak of the, the residence.
Okay.
Would it, would it be possible to?
Okay, so everything needs to be addressed. We're done with the public portion, and we're done with asking questions, so we appreciate it. Okay, so, Richard, please go over findings of the facts.
These are our standard findings of the facts for the variance. I'll read the first page and then go through the highlighted areas on here. Brookings County variance 2019 VAR 005, an application for variance having been filed with the Brookings County Zoning Commission, acting as a Brookings County Board of Adjustment. Copy of the application being attached here too. Such application being made by Mark D. Norgard for J A A R L Investments LLC regarding the following real property. Lots A and F, lots A, B, C, D, and F, about Lot 3 of Twazur subdivision within Lake Ponce Heights, all in government Lot 3 of Section 5, Township 112 North, Range 52 West, Laketon Township. After due notice, a public hearing having been held on the application on the second day of July 2019. Number one. Number two. Number three. Number four. And number five, the Brookings County Board of Adjustment further finds and determines conditions this variance upon the following special conditions or safeguards. A, shape and size of Twazur's subdivision Lot F, 46, 40 feet by 96. Twazur subdivision was replanted in 1984, and the location of the existing cabin was built in 1974. Lot was planted before the current zoning requirements. By the Brookings County Board of Adjustment, by at least two-thirds vote, if it's full membership hereby grants the above petitioner a variance for the above described real property as follows. Build a 52-feet, 6-inch by 24-foot residential three-story residence with an attached 10-foot by 28-foot deck, .39 hundredths from the highest known watermark. This variance is specifically conditioned upon initial and continued appliance with all conditions and safeguards and five above, upon compliance with all applicable provisions of the Brookings County zoning ordinance. If approved, the Brookings County zoning director is authorized to issue any required building permits for construction consistent with the terms of this variance. If this variance is not used within three years of the date granted, it shall be invalid, dated the second day of July 2019.
Oh, Richard, I was in the understanding that the deck was the same width as the house. It's 24, and you got the deck.
Yep, all right, thank you. Anything else that I missed?
Anything else? All right, so hearing nothing more, Richard, please call for a vote.
Kleinjohn?
No.
Ford?
No.
Spence?
No.
Jensen?
No.
Bartley?
Yes.
McKeew?
No.
Erickson?
No.
Nelson?
Hi.
Any like which?
No.
Seven nays, two yeses, motion fails. We can go over and read the denied findings. Here I have those ready to be read. This is for the denial of the findings of facts, denial of the variance. An application for a variance having been filed with the Brookings County Zoning Commission, acting as a Brookings County Board of Adjustment. A copy of the application being attached here too, incorporated here within by, by this reference. Such application being made by Mark Norgard for J A A R L Investments LLC regarding the following described real property. Lots A and F of lots A, B, C, D, and E, NF, about Lot 3 of Twazur subdivision within Lake Ponce Heights, all in government Lot 3 of Section 5, Township 112 North, Range 52 West, Laketon Township, located at 127 South Lake Drive, Arlington, South Dakota. After due notice, a public hearing having on the application on the second day of July 2019. The Brookings County Board of Adjustment hereby finds that on, number one, on May 14th, Mark Norgard applied for a variance to build a 24-foot wide by 52-foot, 6-inch long cabin with a 10-foot by 24-foot attached deck. with a ten-foot by twenty-four foot attached deck, zero feet, four and a half inches from the highest watermark. Number two, the Brookings County zoning ordinance for the LP Lake Park Districts in Article Four, Chapter four point oh-three, oh-three point oh-one, Table point oh-three, oh-three point one, requires a seventy-five foot setback from the high watermark. Number three, the applicant requested a zero foot, four inches and a half inch setback, which would require a variance of seventy-four feet, seven and a half inches from the high watermark. Number four, the Brookings County zoning ordinance for LP Lake Park Districts in Article Four, Chapter four point oh-three, oh-three point four, requires no residence, shall exceed two and a half stories or thirty-five feet from the peak of the residence to the highest ground next to the structure. Number five, the applicant requested to build a three-story residence. Number six, a legal description of the property for which the variance was requested is lot A and F of lots A, B, C, D, E, N, F, all about lot three in Twazur's subdivision within Lake Ponce Heights, all in government lot three, section fifteen, township one twelve north, range fifty-two west, Laketon Township. A public hearing was scheduled to be held at the Brookings County City Government Center at three-ten Chambers, five-twenty-third Street, Brookings, South Dakota, on June fourth, two thousand nineteen, at eight P.M. Legal notices were published of the hearing on May twenty-first and twenty-eighth in the Brookings Register, a legal newspaper for the county, and were also published in the Arlington Sun on May twenty-third and thirtieth. At the meeting on June fourth, six members of the Brookings County Board of Adjustment were present. The Brookings County zoning ordinance requires at least two-thirds vote of its full membership, i.e. six votes for a variance. The applicant asked proposed, asked to propose, postpone the request until the next meeting or a special meeting date, due to only six members of the Board were present. A general, a public hearing was scheduled to be held at the Brookings County Government Center, three-ten Chambers, on Tuesday, July second, two thousand nineteen. Notice of the rescheduled public hearing is published on June eighteenth and nineteenth in the Brookings County... Where are we at? Thank you. Notice of the rescheduled public hearing is published on June eighteenth and twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, in the Brookings Register with a legal newspaper of the county and were also published in the Arlington Sun on June twentieth and twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen. At the public hearing on July second, two thousand nineteen, nine members of the Brookings County Board of Adjustment were present. The Brookings County zoning ordinance requires two-thirds vote of its full membership, i.e. six votes, to approve the variance. Number thirteen, the property for which the variance was requested is located in the county of Brookings. Number fourteen, the Brookings County zoning ordinance in Article Four, Administrat, Article Six, Administrative Section, Article six point oh-one, General Section oh-five, point oh-two, powers and jurisdictions relating to variance. The Board of Adjustment shall have the power whereby reason of exception, narrowness, shallowness, or shape or specific piece of property at the time of the enactment of this ordinance or by reason of exceptional topographic conditions or extraordinary or exceptional situation of the condition, such a piece of property, the strict application of any regulation under this ordinance result in peculiar or unexceptional, exceptional particular difficulties to or exceptional hardship, undue hardships upon the owner of the same, such property to authorize an appeal relating to the property. A variance of such strict application so it relieves such difficult of hardships. If such relief may be granted without substantially impairing the intent or the purpose of this ordinance, a variance shall be, not be granted by the Board of Adjustment unless and until a written application for the, application variance is submitted, indicating the section of the ordinance under which the variance is sought and stating the grounds it is requested. The zoning official may require the notification of adjacent property owners by first-class mail at their last known address of the public hearing at least fourteen days prior to the hearing of the variance. Number three, written notice of time and place of hearing on the application of the variance shall be published at least once, fourteen days prior to the Board of Adjustment public hearing in a legal newspaper of the county. The public hearing shall be held. Any party may appear in person or by agent or attorney. The Board of Adjustment shall make its finding that is empowered under the section of this ordinance described in the application to grant the variance, that granting of the variance will not adversely affect the public interest. The variance of the terms of this ordinance shall not be granted if the following shall occur. There are no special conditions or circumstances which exist which are peculiar to the land, structure, or buildings involved which are applicable to other land districts, structures, or buildings in the same district. B, inter, literal interpretation of the provisions of this ordinance will not be deprive the applicant or rights commonly enjoyed by others, properties in the same district under the terms of this ordinance. The special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicants. Financial disadvantage of the property shall not constitute conclusive proof of unnec, necessary hardship within the process, within the purposes of zoning. The granting of the variance request would confer on the applicant's special privileges that is denied by this ordinance to other land, structures, or buildings in the same district. If non-conforming use of land, structures, or buildings in the same district and not permitted or conforming use of land, structures, or buildings in other districts shall be considered grounds for issuing this variance. Number six, in granting a variance, the Board of Adjustment may prescribe appropriate conditions or safeguards in conformity with this regulation. Violation of such conditions and safeguards when made, part of the terms under which the ordinance is granted, shall be deemed a violation of this ordinance and punishable on the terms of this regulation in accordance with six point oh-five oh-five. Under no circumstances shall the Board of Adjustment grant a variance to allow a use not permissible under the terms of this regulations in the district involved or used expressly by implication prohibited by the terms of this reg, regulation in the said district. Number eight, the concurring vote of two-thirds vote of its members of the Board of Adjustment, six votes shall be necessary to approve the application of the variance. The variance shall expire within three years from the date granted when it becomes effective, if no work is commenced. The real estate for which the applicant is requested for the variance is located in the Lake Park Zone District. Following the testimony presented by the applicant, the proponents and the opponents, the Board of Adjustment voted two in favor and seven opposed to approving the variance. Causing the motion for approval to fail. The Brookings County Board of Adjustment finds that the application should be denied because the applicant does not have a hardship as required by the ordinance. Number eighteen, the Brookings County Board of Adjustment finds that the application should be denied because the right reasons set forth in the application do not justify granting of the variance. The Brookings County Board of Adjustment finds that granting of the variance will not be in harmony in the general spirit purposed on the intent of this regulation would be interest, interest to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. Number twenty, the Brookings County Board of Adjustment specifically finds that granting of the variance allowing a zero foot, four and a half inch setback from the high watermark on Lake Ponce and three stories in height would be detrimental to the lake and public welfare. This application is de, denied dated the second day of July two thousand nineteen. And you can go on to the next.
Alright, um, so try to keep things moving here. So, on to the next agenda item. Um, we're gonna hear agenda item number nine, two thousand nineteen, variance zero zero six. Jack Peterson has made an application, two zero one nine, variance zero zero six, to the Brookings County Board of Adjustment for a variance, Article Four, District Requirements, Chapter four point zero-three, Lake, LP Lake Park District, Section four point zero-three, point zero-three, density, area, and yard regulation, minimum lakefront. The property is described as lots ten through eleven through twelve, dash thirteen, dash fourteen, dash fifteen of the Haggin-Six subdivision of the OL, one and two of lot four, and all that certain tract of real estate thirty feet in the width lying between lots eleven dash, excuse me, ten dash eleven dash twelve, dash thirteen, dash fourteen, dash fifteen of Haggin-Six subdivision of OL, one and two of lot four, all in section thirty-two, township one oh-nine north, range fifty west, Midary Township, located at nine zero eight zero Haggin-Six Road, Brookings, S.D., five seven zero zero six. Okay? And we have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Um, we had so moved by Mr. McKeon and second by Mr. Ford, thank you. Perfect, and, um, whenever Richard's ready, we'll get that staff report, so just a few seconds here.
Yeah, two zero nineteen, variance zero zero six, is it? Excuse me, Jack Peterson has applied for a variance to add two decks onto his residence. One deck is six foot by twenty foot, with the supporting post being fourteen feet from the highest known watermark. And the other deck is six feet by twelve foot, with the supporting post eighteen feet from the highest known watermark. Um, the decks will not have access to the lakeshore and the decks will serve as a walkout for, um, two patio doors that are existing on the residence. And the decks will be in line and not obstruct the view with the neighboring houses on either side of the applicant. The shoreline is covered and consists of mature trees, brushes, and a steep embankment with rocks towards the water's edge. Haggin-Six subdivision was planted in September twenty-fourth, two thousand fifty-eight, or, excuse me, nineteen fifty-eight, um, prior to the Lake Park requirements. And the applicant was granted a variance in two thousand and five to rebuild the cabin on the found, in the same location there, um, that was a need in repair. And it does comply with the Brookings County Conferensive Plan on there. And letters were sent to the adjoining landlords and the Midary Township Chairman and Clerk. Public notices were published on June eighteenth and the twenty-fifth and the Vaugift Tribune on June twentieth and twenty-seventh. Here's his variance application. The site plan, existing house, he's coming out six feet. There's a little abutment that comes out here, I think it's two feet, I believe it is. Support post to be out at four feet. It'll be, um, fourteen feet from the highest known watermark and eighteen feet on this side. This is the south side of the house. This is the north side. This is very restricted, large trees in this area, it really doesn't have a lake view right here of his, from there. It's pretty well protected with, with rocks and mature trees. This is the plat of the property. This is where the house is located, right here. This is the beacon map of the property. This is the house, this is where the two decks would go, extend out four feet to the supporting post. This is the south deck, looking north. This is, the wheel is at fourteen feet, or four feet out from the house from the highest known watermark. It's built up quite a bit, there's about a three-foot, four-foot drop-off right here down to large rocks in that area. This is from the lakeshore looking towards the west, back towards the house on the south deck. This is at the north end of the house, looking south towards the, the wheels at four feet from the house or, um, eighteen feet from the watermark, I believe, there. And this is the south edge of the north deck, the wheel is out four feet to the support post. You can see the, this is at the north end of the north deck, lining up in there. This is looking from the, from the rock that I could still stand on and not fall into the water, looking towards the west here on the north end of the deck. This is just looking north, south along the, uh, excuse me, north along the shoreline for the, um, adjoining properties and this is looking south along for the adjoining properties. There's really trees, mature trees and no, would not obstruct the view there for that. He will not have a lake access off the deck, they'll just be from the house. And that's all that I have.
Alright, um, so thank you for the staff report and we'll ask the applicant to come forward if you are in the audience and of course, you know the drill by now, say your name and, uh, tell us a little bit about what you plan on doing.
Uh, thank you. My name is Jack Peterson and I'm the person applying for the variance. As stated, I am looking to, I built the house back in two thousand five, two thousand six on the existing, uh, structure that was there. I had put the patio doors in, however, I did not put decks on the house. As you can see in the pictures, I did install ledger boards, uh, to do so. Probably two, three years ago, I came in to ask for a building permit and was told that I needed a variance in order to put those decks on. I guess my concern and my hardship is that I do have two patio doors on the house. Would like to be able to, um, you know, A, not that, not be a safety issue anymore and to have something on the other side of that. Decks are obviously an easier ti, uh, solution than taking those out, but, uh...
Have you just slide the mic over a little bit?
Sorry. Do I need to repeat anything or?
It's good.
Okay. So hence my application for, uh, putting the decks on. As you can see, the shoreline, uh, does consist of a lot of old cottonwoods. Many of them quite, quite a bit taller than the house. Uh, we do have a pretty established riprap along the shoreline. If I may also note, the existing house has a footing that came out actually another twelve feet in front of where the house is and that footing still exists. Um, it's still below the waterline, so if anything should happen, that footing is still there to protect the house and the shore, um, the house and the, and anything from twelve foot back to the house. So, we feel we are very well protected. Again, I'm just simply asking for, uh, a six-foot deck on the house so we can put a couple chairs out there and maybe a grow.
Alright, um, open for discussion from, from the Board. So, anything that the Board wants to discuss right now?
You know what the difference in height is of the grade from the shoreline to the top of the grade right by your house? Looks like it's a pretty...
From the, from the...
From the shoreline up to your house.
It would depend on the point at which the water's at. Obviously, it was higher earlier this year. We've never really had, um, we've never had an intrusion of water into the house. Um, nor have we really been threatened by it coming up into the house, even with the high water we've had at Lake Campbell. But I would say at this point, would you say six feet?
I'd say five in that vicinity, yeah, just by the eyeball of it, that would be my...
You know, and obviously the water level's gone down, you know, a good foot and a half probably since, since Richard had even taken these pictures. So, when, I assume when Richard came out, that was when the water level was fairly high. And as you can see, there's, the, uh, the shoreline is, it's not close to those areas. Can't even really see the water, I guess. Apologize.
Anything else among the Board members or questions we have for the applicants, as of now, anyway?
Right here, you can kinda see part of it, but I was down about two steps or probably two and a half feet below grade right here where I took the pictures, looking back towards the house. That's about the only place you could get at the shores, over here at the north end.
Could I ask the, Tom Davis here, alternate, could I ask the applicant, are there any mature trees that could fall on the deck? Or do you, have you cut them back so they don't fall on the house?
I did have someone come in, uh, about two years ago, uh, and had them trim a lot of those trees up and obviously that's a, a concern of mine as well. trees up and obviously that's a concern of mine as well, being not only the decks but the house itself. So I did have him clean up any of those up. I don't feel, I, I feel comfortable with the fact that if a tree did fall or should happen to fall, I believe at this point they would either fall into the water to either Or obviously try to take corrective measures to handle the situation before it should happen.
Thank you.
Good question. Anything else? Board? Okay. All right. So moving on here, we'll open it up to the public. Anything anybody else wants to say regarding this? Okay, opponents, proponents, proponents, opponents. Okay, hearing none. We'll go back to, we'll close the public hearing, back to the board for any other discussion. Anything else?
So basically, the supporting post would probably be what, two and a half, two to two and a half feet farther, closer to the shoreline than what the house actually is? Yeah, be pretty close. He was having a six foot deck, so they'd be about four foot farther, four foot closer to the lake than the house, so be that eighteen feet and... Because it looks like the house, it, yeah, right there. There's a jog right there, yeah. Oh, yeah, okay, I see what you're, to be out two feet farther than what this right here. Yes, yep, you're correct. Now I got you.
So, yeah, it, so I'm understanding that output, I don't know what the right word is, so it'll be two feet farther than that?
Correct. Where this j- junt out is, it would stick out two feet farther than that, right there, and four feet over here with this, where a jog's back in.
Makes sense.
So the deck is going to reach out about to the end of the gutter downspouts?
Pretty close, right, correct, yep. Because my wheel is at four feet, so it'd be pretty close to where the edge of the downspout is. And maybe two feet farther than the existing deck up here.
Will there be a connection between the two decks?
Oh, I'm sorry?
Will there be a connection between the two decks, the upper deck and the lower deck?
At one time, I've kind of wanted to do that, I think I've eliminated that idea. I just simply want, you know, a deck in front of either patio door to, to be able to utilize patio doors. I don't feel that having a walkway in between is really something we need, so, no. Nothing will extend beyond into that bump out area, if that makes sense. Richard, if you have the pictures of the ledger boards that are there, or if you can see the one ledger board that's actually attached to the house, that would be, that's the one I put in years ago, that would be, give you an idea of where that deck would go and simply no further into that, into the extended part of the house.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Mr. Nelson, please. We value your opinion. If you have anything to say, please do. Okay, all right. Pretty straightforward. So again, we close that, back to the board. And so, Richard, please go over the findings of the facts.
Read the first page and then go through the highlighted areas. Brookings County zoning variance two thousand nineteen VAR zero zero six, application for having been filed with the Brookings County Zoning Commission acting as a Brookings County Board of Adjustment. Copy of the application being attached her too. Such application being made by Jack Peterson regarding the following real property. Lots ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen and fifteen of Haguenick subdivision about lot one and two of lot four and all that certain tract of real estate thirty feet in width lying between lots ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen and fifteen of Haguenick subdivision. Lot lot one and two of lot four, all in section thirty-two township one oh nine north, range fifty west, Midary Township. After due notice, public hearing have been held on the application on the second of July two thousand nineteen. Number one. Number three. Number four. Number five, the Brookings County Board of Adjustment further determines and condition this variance upon the following special conditions or safeguards. A, shape and size of lot. B, location of the existing residence. C, Haguenick subdivision was planted on September twenty-fourth, nineteen fifty-eight, prior to the current lake park zoning regulations. The Brookings County Board of Adjustment by least two-thirds vote of its full membership hereby grants the above petitioner a variance for the above described property as followed. Build two decks onto the residence. Deck number one, six foot by twelve foot with post to be eighteen feet from the highest known watermark. Deck number two, six foot by twenty foot with the post to be fourteen feet from the highest known watermark. This variance is specifically conditioned upon initial and continued compliance with all the conditions and safeguards in five above, compliance with all applicable provisions of the Brookings County zoning ordinance. The Brookings County zoning director, if approved, is authorized to issue any required building permits for construction consistent with the terms of this variance. If this variance is not used within the three years of the date granted, shall be invalid, dated the second day of July two thousand nineteen. Any additions or corrections?
Any additions, corrections, anything we can think of? Okay. All right, it's Richard, please call roll.
Ford.
Yes.
Spence.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Bartley.
Aye.
McHugh.
Aye.
Yurkson.
Aye.
Kleinjohn.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Elankwich.
Aye.
Motion passes. Sign those two, please.
Thank you.
Onto the next agenda item number ten. Two thousand nineteen conditional use zero zero seven, Chad and Sarah Tacker have made an application two one, two zero one nine CU zero zero seven to the Brookings County Board of Adjustment for a conditional use. Brookings joint jurisdictional area, article four agricultural residential and floodplain in Aquifer Districts, section four zero five, Agricultural District A, section four zero eight, special exception number eighteen, extended home occupations, and Brookings County zoning ordinance article eleven, section eleven point zero one A Agricultural District, conditional use permit number twenty, home extended business. The property is described as south eight hundred sixty feet of the north one thousand nine hundred seventy feet of the west six hundred twenty-eight feet of the northwest quarter, except lot H dash two thereof, all in section thirteen township one hundred ten north, range fifty west, Brookings Township, located at two six zero eight Midary Avenue, Brookings SD five seven zero zero six. And so, do we have a motion for this?
So moved.
So, so moved by Mr. Ford and a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McEwen, thank you. And start out with the staff report, please.
Yes, two thousand nineteen CU zero zero seven. Chad and Sarah Tacker have applied for a conditional use special exception for an extended home business for a tree service business. Business will be located at the residence at two six zero eight Midary Avenue, which is also known as four hundred and seventy first avenue and or county, Brookings County Highway seventy-seven. Excuse me. In Brookings, South Dakota, which is three quarters of a mile north of the US Highway fourteen bypass. They have two international society of arbor, arbor culture arborists on staff and, and the staff of one to four seasoned employees to provide professional tree care to urban and rural customers. The tree refuges will be disposed of in several ways. One will be chipped and used as a mulch. Two larger branches and logs could be milled and used for lumber. Three, cut into firewood and ta- or taken to the landfill. They may occasionally burn the tree refuges, but will need to contact the Brookings County Fire, or Brookings Fire Department, excuse me, nine one one dispatch for notify of a controlled burn. Their equipment would be stored inside existing shed north of the house or on a, parked on a cement pad east of the shed. Business hours would generally be from eight to five within the local area, but could be earlier or later depending on the distance of the job is from their residence. They will use the existing driveway for the entrance and exit to their property and their business plan is attached. They're located in the Brookings County, Brookings City joint jurisdictional area and the city of Brookings Community Development Department was advised of their application and has no objections to their request. Public notices were published in the Brookings Register on June eighteenth and twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. Letters were sent to the adjoining landowners, the city of Brookings Community Development Department, Brookings Township Chairman and Clerk and the Brookings County Highway Department. Is there a copy of the conditional use permit? Is there a site plan? Existing driveway, their house is here, garage and other small outbuilding here, you loop around. There's a parking pad, this is the building they would use to park their equipment.
This is the old Marlin Hill property.
Right, just north of town, it was just sold this spring, south of Sunnyview. This is some livestock yards and I believe there's cement, a cement pad here also that they could use for parking. Grain bins over here and other large quants that they use for storage or whatever, but adequate large area within the yard for parking and driving around and storage. This is their business plan. We'll have to speed read that. This is the beacon map, this is the, the hill property which was sold this spring, this is the building site right here. Brookings water treatment plant is right here, little go-kart racetrack is right down This is looking from their driveway, looking towards the north, good clean view there, looking to the south. This is looking down the driveway. This is around the house looking towards the north, this is the shed that they would be used to store their equipment. Parking pads over here where there used to be some livestock yards. This is just looking straight ahead of the driveway, grain bins are over here. Here's the other quants that I was talking about and this is the other garage and outbuildings looking towards the south here, so ample room to move around and, and move their equipment and store a little wood if they like or, so that's all that I have.
All right. So applicants, if you wouldn't mind, come up and address the board, say your name and what, tell us a little bit about this.
I'm Sarah Tacker.
My name's Chad Tacker.
We have recently acquired this property and for a number of reasons, we're interested in it. It's always kind of been our dream to have a little acreage and raise our family there and it was just a perfectly situated place for our business that has been slowly growing over the last several years and needs a place to really call home up until this point. We've just been, you know, Chad's been operating the business just from job site to job site and, you know, winter storing the equipment that he had, you know, at family's property in the winter and keeping it on job sites during the working season. So basically, we just want to make it home and make a living and raise our son, so.
And I forgot, the name of their business is Glacier, Glacier Lake Tree Service?
Correct.
Yeah.
All right. Let's open it up for discussion to the board. Anything we want to talk about, any questions we have? Any thoughts on this? We all kind of know pretty much where it's at, pretty straightforward there and you just purchased this, it's, what is sounded like?
December.
Just that small, okay.
It was on auction in December.
Okay. Okay.
Just for a little bit of owners, ownership of this, some of the hills are a little bit of, are some of my, I don't know how to say it, but I, I have hills as part of my ancestry. Anyway, Kathy, yeah, her husband was Marlin and they were the, the, their kids or their, the people that were their, their fathers were the people that were, that died in, in the, in December were the ones that were, that, that were...
Drowned in that accident.
Drowned, yeah, drowned in the, in the accident. Yeah, you, you remember. Yeah, so...
A big legacy then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
To fulfill.
We have, no pressure to live with you there.
So anyway, so that's why this place became ownership.
Interesting. Well...
Yep, so it's, yeah.
So kind of maintenance, property maintenance, maintaining it.
Yep. So it's time, time for this place to, to become ownership for somebody else.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And of course, roadside looks, for lack of better words and...
Right.
From what I've always seen, it's been a really nice property.
So it's time for this, yep.
All right, anything else from the board?
Would we address any signage on the property?
I mean, we would.
For the business.
Maybe someday, but, you know, right now with moving and, you know, coming out of winter, we don't have any immediate plans for a sign, but...
I think some signage is allowed, Richard, isn't it?
Correct. Right, as of now, they've, we allowed a sixteen square foot sign.
Yeah. Just so you know that. Gritten, this variance allows you to put a sign up.
Okay.
As an alternate board member, I'd like to ask the applicants if they would be storing any ash trees there with the, you know, with the ash borer infestation coming?
So, we're out of the quarantine zone for Emerald Ash Borer right now. Once Emerald Ash Borer is addressed and actually shows up here, the state health forest inspector, Dr. John Ball, will make that announcement. At that point in time, we'd be required to dispose of it in a different fashion. For example, Sioux Falls has a specific place that all green ash must be taken and disposed of at cost. So as of right now, we, we would because Emerald Ash Borer has not been identified up here and we just would use that most likely as firewood or dispose of it at the landfill, depending on. But certainly, once EAB is, is found in this, in this vicinity, will be required, no doubt by law, to dispose of it in a certain quarantine zone. At, at that point in time, I'm sure the Brookings Forestry Parks Rec will come up with a place to dispose of it.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Pretty straightforward again, so, big legacy, comply, right? Okay? Um, all right, my notes here. So, Richard?
Public hearing, opponents, proponents?
Oh, yes, thank you. So we'll address it to our entire audience out there. Anything from the proponents, opponents, anyone from the audience, open to the public?
Madam Chair, I do have just one question, comment.
Luke Muller, First District.
And it's maybe part question, part suggestion. As far as any of the, any of the thing cut, hauled back, mulched, what have you, the question is where would that be located from a standpoint of refuse from your ordinance that you'd want to know that? And then the backside of that is, is that my recommendation from a zoning staff person would be make sure that there is none of that in any setback areas, if that's the case. So I just, my question was where... If that's the case, so it just, my question was where that'd be located.
The mulch and any firewood and logs would be. If you can kind of back up the picture, that would be in kind of the big cement pad up there. To the east of what we call the machine shop. So that way, you know, it, we can easily access it during the winter, yes, yep, correct. It's actually, it's it's almost solid concrete poured in there. So it it'd make for a good use just to store the mulch and firewood. Basically, almost in the middle of the property. But it's it's still sheltered from the tree line running north and south and east and west, so nobody would be able to see it from any public right away.
And your proposed driveway, have you talked to the Brookings County Highway Superintendent on that yet?
No, and that that. We just, we put that on there because it's kind of a dream, you know, since we'll be living there and this type of industry. Has some heavy equipment, we would like to maybe someday have a driveway there and so I just thought we would include it here, but it's not something that we're preparing to plan at this point.
It's something you would have to go through the county highway superintendent. And then they, there's requirements for like steel coves and.
Sure.
They got certain criteria that they want for the drainage, that's. You got that water plant south of there and man nineteen sixty-nine, that whole area was high water area, so. We, he, he needs to be involved on any driveway that you put in.
No problem.
Anything else from the board or anyone else? Okay. All right, so that was the public portion, I believe. Okay, so we'll close the public hearing and back to the board. Okay. Hearing nothing else, Richard, please go over the findings of the facts.
We'll read the front page and then highlight the the other areas on there. Application for conditional use permit have been filed with the Brookings County Zoning Commission acting as a board of adjustment. Copy of the application being attached here too, such application being made by Chad and Sarah Tacker regarding the following real property. The south eight hundred and sixty feet of the north one thousand nine hundred and seventy feet. The west six hundred and twenty-eight feet of the northwest one fourth except H two thereof. All in section thirteen township one ten north range fifty west Brookings Township. Located at two six zero eight Madera Avenue, Brookings, South Dakota. After due notice, a public hearing have been held on the application on the second day of July two thousand nineteen. Number one, the Brookings County Board of Adjustment hereby finds it is empowered to grant such a conditional use under the following sections of the Brookings County zoning ordinance. Article eleven, section eleven oh one A agricultural district, conditional use number twenty home extended business. Of the Brookings County zoning ordinance and article four, section four oh five A agricultural district, section section four oh eight. Special exception number eighteen extended home occupation of the Brookings joint jurisdiction area. Further finding that granting of the conditional use will not adversely affect the public interest. Number two, Brookings County Board of Adjustment further finds and certifies that the following specific rules governing the conditional use request have been complied with. None stated. Number three, the Brookings County Board of Adjustment further finds that satisfactory provisions and arrangements have been made concerning the following where applicable. A. Where used current driveway off Madera Avenue. B, no on-street parking allowed and use onsite parking. C, must use a trash or refuse service, do you use a dumpster service now for your household garbage or?
We will.
Shop garbage or anything like that?
Yeah, we won't be burning garbage, um, we're still kind of transitioning there, um, our baby and I are staying with our parents, so.
It's just kind of our general requirements as we go through those. D, screening and buffering, none stated. E, signed sixteen square foot sign allowed. E, required yards and other spaces, none stated. G, general compatibility compatibility with adjacent properties and other property in the district. Comprehensive plan met for the agricultural district. Number four, the Brookings County Board of Adjustment further determines and conditions this conditional use permit upon the following additional special conditions or safeguards. Number one, call the Brookings City Police Fire Dispatch when you're going to have a control burn of rubbish. Brookings County Board of Adjustment by at least two-thirds vote of its full membership hereby grants above petition or a conditional use permit for the above described property as follows. Conditional use special exception for an extended home occupation business for a tree service. This conditional use permit is specifically conditioned upon initial and continued compliance with all the requirements and conditions. And three above and upon compliance with all applicable provisions of the Brookings County zoning ordinance. Brookings County zoning director, if approved, is authorized to issue any required building permits for construction consistent with the requirements of this conditional use permit. This conditional use permit is not used within three years of the date granted, it shall be invalid dated the second day of July two thousand nineteen.
All right, thank you, and we'll go call for a vote, please.
Spence.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
McHugh.
Aye.
Eriksen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Kleinjohn.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
And Yelenkovic.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sign there, mark that. Sign at the bottom, then mark approved.
All right, so that completes the. Agenda items up till ten and then we'll move on to agenda item number eleven, department reports, so Mr.
Yes, Madam Chair, the first thing we was going to talk about is the elections. But per our bylaws, which was that were amended December fourth, two thousand eighteen, you are the new chairperson until next January. We will need to advertise for an election for a vice chairperson and we'll do that in on the agenda for the. August meeting.
Okay.
In our replacement, we have to. The county commission for any opening on a board, they have to advertise. In this case, we do have one of our alternates who happens to be within the district, it's open. So we would encourage Commissioner Davis to go ahead and apply. Obviously, he's got some some experience. And that's the part about the elections. Number two, on the staff report, we. Sometimes you don't, we don't say thank you enough to the zoning board members who are here or even recognize how long they was on the board. Commissioner Rochelle Rochelle had served on the board for twenty-three years, starting in nineteen ninety-six. Commissioner Nelson. He's a twenty-two year member of the board, he started serving in nineteen ninety-seven. Next up is Commissioner Kleinjohn, he started in two thousand three, so he's got sixteen years on the board. By the way, he started twenty-six days before I started. You know, on the planning side, I had four years in the county. Next up would be Randy Jensen on the board, on this board at least, you know, he had some other county experience. He's got fifteen years on this board. Then we got the newcomers, we've got. Tom Davis at five years as an alternate, Roger Erickson five years as an alternate. And Kimberly E. Lankovich with five years, she's actually got him by a couple of months. And then, of course, we got Terrell Spence has been on the board, says he only four years. You must have replaced one of them other guys from up in that area. And then Mr. McHugh, Counselor McHugh and Chad Ford both have been here for one year. And Commissioner Bartley's been here less than a year. So we we do want to thank you for your service and today we recognize Mr. Rochelle during the county commission meeting and. You know, you all do a great service, sometimes we don't say thank you enough, we we try. And. Obviously, Mr. Rochelle did an excellent job for us. And the old timers, such as. I know the ones with sixteen years or more, we actually had lost another chairman of the planning commission, Mike Mike Kidweiler way back when. It's something we just have to, you know, we have to grieve, but we also have to keep moving. Thank you for your service and the county commission thanks you for your service and and it's like I said today at the county commission meeting. You cannot do anything but help but help change and improve zoning, planning and zoning in Brookings County. If you're on this board for twenty years, your influence is in that zoning ordinance and how the zoning looks countywide. You know, it's not just your your township that you live in, you're. You know, you're you're impacting the whole county, all twenty-three townships, so. You you do more for us than what you realize and we do appreciate it. Unfortunately, I can't give you any more than your fifty bucks a meeting, but. I, if I'm not mistaken, in the old days, you didn't get fifty bucks a meeting, so. Enjoy it while you get it. Oh, yeah, the commissioners don't.
Yeah. You're our advocate, though.
Ever, and July eleventh, for those of you living in the townships, which is about all of you. There is a FEMA meeting at three PM in this room right here. FEMA's coming in, any township that turned in damages on the spring floods and the blizzard and all that, you have to be here. Send them some FEMA forums, they need to figure out how to fill the forums out and bring them with you. And then. FEMA will be here with some people from the state, Richard and Rayland and I will be here and we'll get you through the best we can. And that's all I got. July eleventh. You come July twelfth, me and Commissioner Bartley will be at a national association of counties meeting and you're you're myself. It is a mandatory meeting, by the way, so.
Right, and big thing email come out today also is have the forms completed when you come to the meeting, they want those forms completed.
Yeah, you're, I mean, do the best you can on completing them, but the main thing is to have someone there from your township, otherwise. FEMA's big enough, they can walk away. That's all I got, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Yeah, it's been pretty tough, I think, for all of us recently especially and just my own personal comments and. Just. I don't know, that that's just crazy to think, so, but like Bob said, we we do need to truck on and be. Keep moving forward, I guess, so we have an experienced alternate, so maybe that's. That's a good thing as well. Um, as.
I would just like to add that about Mr. Rochelle, that the autopsy did show that he had a heart attack.
Really, okay, and unfortunately, just according to my Google searches, of course, that wasn't really. Advertised much, so it kind of seemed like it was all portrayed like it was his fault, for lack of better words. I don't know, that's that's unfortunate, but.
And it's ironic that he died at the exact same age as his mother did, from the same reason.
All right, well, keep them in your thoughts and prayers and hang in there. Uh, do we need an executive session? Thoughts, opinions, looks like, knows, so I think we all want to go home, so. Meeting, do I have a move movement for an adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, Richard, you get that? We're done. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Just fill in the name.